I'd like to call to order the February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Colrain Township Zoning Commission. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you, and welcome to all in attendance, township staff and my fellow commissioners. Just a friendly reminder for everyone who is present to silence your devices at this time. Mr. Becker, can we have a roll call, please?
Of course.
Mr. Bachman.
Here.
Mr. Garing. Mr. Westfall.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. McMullin.
Here.
And with Mr. Garing being out, we ask that Ms. Goggle come up.
Before we do, we probably want to go ahead and take the O's. And if Ms. Goggle, if you want to go ahead and be the first one to take an O, that'd be great.
I state your name.
I, Linda Goggle.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I uphold the Constitution.
That I will uphold the Constitution.
And laws of the United States of America.
And law of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
And the laws and resolutions.
And the laws and resolutions.
Of Colrain Township.
Of Colrain Township.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of an alternate member of the zoning commission.
Of an alternate member of the zoning commission.
In and for Colrain Township. In and for.
In and for Colrain Township.
Hamilton County.
Hamilton County.
State of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Can I do it from here?
As long as you stand up.
Well, I'll stand up.
I just want to make sure you're near a mic that they can hear you.
Do we have a name tag?
Forgot.
We'll go ahead and start with Mr. Westfall. I state your name.
I, James Thomas Westfall.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will uphold.
That I will uphold.
The Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
And the laws and resolutions of Colrain Township.
And the laws and resolutions of Colrain Township.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of a primary member on the zoning commission.
Of a primary member on the zoning commission.
In and for Colrain Township.
In and for Colrain Township.
Hamilton County.
Hamilton County.
State of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I got better, sir. I was a little better than saying that.
That's the fourth time I've said it.
I gave him a couple of peels.
That's right.
Make it through your service.
Thank you.
I'm going to need you to go ahead.
They have them under there in that actually.
Thank you.
Thank you. And prior to the meeting, Mr. Westfall notified me that this is his twentieth year on the zoning commission.
Twenty-first, actually.
Twenty-first, wow. So, thank you for your continued service.
I'll keep trying until I get it right.
All right, so next on the agenda, we have the election of officers. So first, do we have a nomination for chairperson? Mr. Bachman, I was curious if you would accept a nomination for chairperson.
Um, you don't want to? Who's going to nominate you?
I'm on year two and a half of chairperson.
You're doing a great job.
Is that a no for you?
That's a no for me because I want you.
Oh geez. Mr. Wilson would.
I'm in agreement here.
Oh geez.
Just narrowing down.
All right.
I'll do it if you want me to.
Do you want a nomination?
Sure.
No.
Somebody else don't want it?
I'll go ahead and make a nomination then for our existing chairperson to remain or to be nominated for this year's chairperson.
All right, I'll accept the nomination. So we do need a motion. Well, we had the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Mr. Baker, can we have a roll call, please?
Well, same order makes it easy. Mr. Bachman.
Yes.
Ms. Goggle.
Yes.
Mr. Westfall.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
And Ms. McMullin.
Yes.
And then next up, we need a nomination for vice chairperson.
I would nominate Mr. Bachman.
Mr. Bachman, would you accept that nomination?
I would accept, yes.
I'll make a motion for Mr. Bachman to be the vice chairperson for this year. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Mr. Baker.
Mr. Bachman.
Yes.
Ms. Goggle.
Yes.
Mr. Westfall.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. McMullin.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. So next we have the approval of meeting minutes. Bless you. So first up are the minutes from our September nineteenth meeting. Did anyone have any comments or edits to those minutes? Hearing none, can we have a motion for approval, please?
Just for that meeting, nine nineteen? I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from our meeting of September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
And I'll second. Mr. Becker, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Bachman.
Yes.
Ms. Goggle.
I abstain.
Mr. Westfall.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
And Ms. McMullin.
Yes.
Next are the minutes from our October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Any comments or edits for them set of minutes? Hearing none, can we have a motion for approval? And I'll second. Mr. Becker.
Mr. Bachman.
Yes.
Ms. Goggle.
I abstain.
Mr. Westfall.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
I abstain.
Ms. McMullin, sorry.
Yes. And now we have the minutes from our November second, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Do we have any comments or edits? Hearing none, can we have a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
And I will second. Mr. Becker.
Mr. Bachman.
Yes.
Ms. Goggle.
I abstain.
Mr. Westfall.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
I abstain.
Ms. McMullin.
Yes. And then lastly, we have the minutes from November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. And any comments or edits? And to go on record, I did email you with some edits.
Yep.
And it was incorporated?
Yep, changed.
Okay, thank you. Can we have a, or any other edits? Can we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
And I will second. Mr. Becker, please.
Mr. Bachman.
I abstain.
Ms. Goggle.
I abstain.
Mr. Westfall.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. McMullin.
Yes.
Thank you. So next, we would like to welcome the public to address the zoning commission with any items on tonight's agenda. If you're here for either of the public hearings tonight, your comments will be heard during those hearings. And I know we have one signed in. Is it just one that is speaking tonight or any others? Okay, Mrs. Wright.
Good evening, board. I will be brief. I just have a couple of questions. I was wondering who actually is on the board of the zoning commission? I see five people here, but I was just wondering who the other people are. I don't believe it's updated on the township website. And I would just like to wish the board a great rest of the year and hopefully everything that you approve, the trustees will support. Thank you.
Thank you. And is it okay if I answer?
Sure.
Okay, so obviously the three of us, so we have Kevin Wilson, Tim Bachman, myself. Bruce Garing is absent tonight. Then we have Mr. Westfall. Carl Hauser is our alternate.
He's in Florida.
Apparently he's in Florida. And now we have Ms. Goggle.
Who's also an alternate.
Who is also an alternate, yes. Linda Goggle is the alternate. All right, so for final development plan, we have none tonight. So that brings us to our first of two public hearings. The first one is a resolution that came from the Board of Trustees requesting that the zoning commission develop an amendment to Article seven point one point thirteen, group homes for children. And does staff have a presentation, please?
Yep. Thank you for the introduction, Ms. McMullin. So just to reiterate, this will be a proposed text amendment to Article seven point four point thirteen primarily, but it also incorporates an amendment to Table seven dash one, Table thirteen dash one, thirteen dash one being parking and sixteen point two being definitions. Particular inquiry being centered around group homes for children, but also combining all three together, of which, as you see on screen, group homes for children, adult family homes, and adult group homes. That will be what is centered around the proposed text amendment. So for the proposed action, we are proposing text amendments once again to seven dash one, Article seven point four point thirteen, Table thirteen one, and Article sixteen two. This is to redefine the newly proposed designations as halfway houses or community residential centers. This is a designation that is provided by the Ohio Revised Code to incorporate uniform standards for group homes for children, adult family homes, and adult group homes. And three, designate R seven, which is our multifamily residential district, as the permitted district for applications for halfway houses or community residential centers. And then lastly, establish uniform parking requirements for the proposed amendment. Starting us off with a little bit of case history, beginning in November of two thousand and twenty-three specifically, there was a really large influx of applications that were being sent into the Colrain Township office, particularly for group homes for children. Due to that encumbering nature of the applications, including but not limited to complaints from neighbors, scheduled inspections by ODJFS, as well as the means of reviewing uses of neighboring residents within six hundred feet of the proposed group home for children, we determined that formulating a text amendment in this manner will prove to strengthen high quality safety services in conjunction with better efficiency. As for how we got to group homes for children in the first place, it would be back in December of two thousand and eight, Colrain Township staff prepared a zoning text amendment to Articles seven thirteen and sixteen specifically, to incorporate geographical spacing between group homes for children, as it means promoting health and safety for the children, staff, and neighbors. The text amendment approved by the zoning commission and Board of Trustees was then formally added into the zoning resolution, and that was through case ZA two thousand and eight dash oh six. And that amendment looks like, starting with Table seven dash one, that incorporated group homes for children to be permitted in all residential zoning districts, that would be R one through R seven, with certain conditions listed out in seven point four point thirteen. And these are as follows. All buildings in which a group home for children is established shall be residential in character. Each dwelling unit in which a group home for children is established shall be deemed to be a separate group home for children. A dwelling unit in which a group home for children is established shall not be closer than six hundred feet to the next dwelling unit used as a group home for children. And then the parking, the parking requirement was incorporated, one space per employee on shift of maximum employment and two visitor spaces. And then as for the amended definition, it was meant to reflect its standardization with the Ohio Administrative Code, that would be section fifty-one oh one two. And that definition reads, group homes for children shall have the same meaning as in chapter fifty-one oh one of the OAC, and in which functions as a single housekeeping unit. So that takes us to our proposed amendment. Generally, with the uniform standards for group homes for children, adult family homes, and adult group homes, such terms will then be combined to formally be referred to as halfway houses or community residential centers. Once again, that would be to align with ORC, specifically section twenty-nine sixty-seven point fourteen. And this will reflect as such throughout Table seven one, seven point four point thirteen, thirteen one, and sixteen two. Starting us off with Table seven one, this is what the residential use table would look like. And that, as you can see, we are now getting rid of the R one through R six and leaving it to R seven permitted with certain conditions. Those conditions being, halfway houses or community residential centers shall refer to any dwelling unit that has been previously been utilized as a group home for children, adult group home, or adult family home. The zoning standards for halfway houses or community residential centers shall apply to group homes for children, adult group homes, and adult family homes in a uniform manner and must be in accordance with ORC section twenty-nine sixty-seven point fourteen, ORC fifty-one oh one, ORC fifty-one nineteen point three four, and OAC fifty-one oh one two. Halfway houses or community residential centers shall only be permitted in R seven, once again, that is our multifamily residential district. All buildings in which a halfway house or community residential center is established shall be residential in character. Each dwelling unit in which a halfway house or community residential center is established shall be deemed to be a separate halfway house or community residential center. A dwelling unit in which a halfway house or community residential center is established shall not be closer than six hundred feet to the next dwelling unit used as a halfway house or community residential center. The Colrain Township Planning and Zoning Department, Code Department, Police Department, and Fire Department shall have the ability to request the custodial contract permitting the halfway house or community residential center for each individual resident. The owner slash operator of a halfway house or community residential center must provide proof that building and fire codes are adequately met and maintained. If the owner and operator does not provide this documentation within fourteen days, the zoning administrator shall have the ability to refuse or revoke the zoning certificate granting allowance for the halfway house or community residential center. Township staff shall have the ability to, upon request, inspect the interior of the property for compliance. Any violations to the Colrain Township zoning resolution, including the refusal to provide proof of documentation, shall be subject to penalties as described in Article five, violations and penalties. Any halfway house or community residential center that is found to be a nuisance property pursuant to Township Resolution one oh nine dash twenty-two or its future iterations shall be subject to revocation of the zoning certificate to operate as a halfway house or community residential center. If the halfway house or community residential center is comprised of children under the age of eighteen, then such halfway houses or community residential centers must abide by all curfew regulations as approved by the Colrain Township Board of Trustees. Transitioning to Table thirteen dash one, parking, parking standards will follow that of the pre-existing group homes for children requirements, and simply put, that was one space per employee of, on shift of maximum employment and two visitor spaces. And then amending the definition, that would now be halfway houses or community residential centers functioning as a single housekeeping unit shall refer to, one, any dwelling unit that houses a maximum of ten children in accordance with OAC fifty-one oh one two, or two, any dwelling unit that houses and provides accommodations for three to sixteen unrelated adults and provides supervision and personal care to at least three unrelated adults in accordance with ORC section fifty-one nineteen point three four. Whether it is children or adults being housed, such homes must meet the requirements universally in ORC twenty-nine sixty-seven point fourteen and fifty-one oh one. Wrapping up to our recommendation, staff recommends for approval of case CZZC twenty-four dash one. And once again, that would be for Table seven dash one, Article seven point four point thirteen, Table thirteen dash one, and Article sixteen point two. That will conclude my staff report.
Thank you. So we do need to open our public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak? Mr. Sulzman?
I think you have a motion to open the public hearing. That needs to occur.
Oh, you're right. I skipped ahead on my script. So can we have a motion and a second to open our public hearing, please?
Make a motion that we open the public hearing on this particular issue.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Mr. Becker, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bachman.
Yes.
Ms. Goggle.
Yes.
Mr. Westfall.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. McMullin.
Yes.
And if you plan on speaking, that's right, you support tell the truth, nothing but truth to help you God?
Thank you.
Just make sure you state your name and address. Again.
Stephanie Wright, thirty-seven, twenty-nine, Blue Rock Road. I had a couple of questions after listening to that presentation. What about existing group homes or things like that? Are those like grandfather clause in?
Essentially, yes.
Okay. And then who actually from the township will be inspecting these properties? Will it be code enforcement? Will it be the zoning department? Will it be one specific individual?
From my understanding, it would probably be code and police on top and then sort of us right below that.
Okay, so there would be someone assigned to that duty as well as their other duties with inspecting other nuisance properties. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else who wished?
And I would just like to clarify, as far as grandfathered in, I don't, it depends on, it's very fact-specific as far as what you're referring to. So that's a legal question that may be determined ultimately in the courts if need be, but.
All right, and nobody else wished to speak, correct? Okay, so we do need a motion to close our public hearing, please?
I'll second that.
Mr. Becker?
Mr. Bachman.
Yes.
Ms. Goggle.
Yes.
Mr. Westfall.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
And Ms. McMullin.
Yes.
All right, commissioners, it is time for our dialogue.
Just have a couple of questions for our staff. So as I understand it, we're eliminating the various sections of residential zoning for these, so R one on the way to R six is now eliminated for group homes or halfway houses to be created. So my first question is, what is the density in R seven? What's the maximum units to the acre?
Maximum units to the acre?
So where I'm going is, because you're, now you're getting very specific on how many kids can be in the unit, as well as how many adults can be in the unit, which was not the case before. So I'm just trying to rationalize in my brain, is there discrepancy with the density that's on the books versus what you've got in your definition?
Well, to answer your question, and correct me if I'm leading into the wrong place, primarily the reason why we even transitioned, let's say, for example, from R six to R seven, had to do particularly, A, with the review process by which we had to handle it. There was a lack of, you can fill me in if I'm wrong, David, but a lack, a lack of sort of consistent record in sort of who was appropriately applied for and who wasn't and permitted, sorry. There were a lot of operators who were operating, obviously, without a certificate, and that created significant issues in just analyzing the six hundred foot distance between group homes. Once we were able to get a list from police and code that adequately incorporated those that weren't permitted, then from there, it was sort of a very manual review of every single address within six hundred feet in order to get to an Excel database that could then be standardized for the future. So that's sort of why we transitioned the process to zones by which, as for density, there is less of minimum lot area. We do go from seventy-five hundred square feet per unit to six thousand square feet per unit, but just in terms of the number of existing R sevens versus R six, there is less available R seven than there is R six.
So let me, let me ask it another way. So is an R seven, the land use in R seven typically multifamily?
Yes.
So a walk-up twelve family?
Yes.
So let's use that as an example. So if it's a walk-up twelve family, how do you envision a group home working? Is that whole building then a group home? Is that, is that unit a group home?
So say, for example, if it's, just for clear examples, circumstances, say it's a four-unit apartment building, then only one unit would be allowed to be permitted as a group home for children.
One unit of those, of those four?
Of the four.
So three, in that particular example that you used, three of the four would be market-driven?
Yes.
And one of the four would be subject to the provisions of this revision?
Yes.
Okay. But still then, under your definition, no more than ten kids in that unit?
Yes, but realistically, I.
That, that's where I'm going, so.
And I don't think, I think the Administrative Code also addresses that there can't be, is a maximum of ten children as well. So that's incorporated.
See, I guess I understand that in a house. I understand that in a single-family home where there's three or four bedrooms. Okay, now I'm starting to make some sense on the ten kids. But it does not make much sense to me in an R seven zone in a multifamily unit. To have ten kids, that seems to me to be very detrimental to those children, let alone the services of fire, police, schools, and so on and so forth.
Oh, completely understandable. But they also have to meet the state regulations as well. And that, that doesn't mean we're necessarily barring them, for example, let's say if they want to have, you know, two to three kids in an apartment building, if they were to have three rooms, and that ties into the state standards that they have to meet as well, or the county standards, sorry, that they have to meet in conjunction with getting a zoning certificate. So they have to highlight that for one children, one room has to be seventy square feet at least, and then for every children after that, they have to have a room of fifty square feet.
Okay.
So that is a requirement that they have to meet on its own by the county.
So, so let me kind of think through it here a little bit. So you have, the zoning code that you're proposing has a maximum of ten kids.
Yes.
But given the square footage of that particular bedroom, the county requirements, which are probably the state requirements or similar, may restrict that to only two or three kids. May be much more restrictive.
Yes.
I guess that's where I'm going. I was real nervous about ten kids in a, in a, in a multifamily unit that might have one or two bedrooms.
Oh, I know.
But what you're telling me is, there's other codes that will, will not require or will not, not allow that.
Prevent that, yes, absolutely, yes. Pretty much, you got it nailed down, yeah. If, if they were to come with us, let's say, for example, with a two-bedroom apartment with ten kids, then obviously we would shut that down, but obviously the county, it's their job to shut that down, and they would most certainly do.
Okay. Well, in theory, it wouldn't even come to you because it's, if it did, it'd be somebody else who would hope that the county would say, no, you can't even get that far. Okay. Okay.
And my question comes into the parking. So R seven multifamily unit, we have a number of parking spaces. Does the property owner at any point have to agree to allow them to have a group home in their building? Meaning that if it's a four-unit, maybe there's eight parking spots, and now we're saying they have to have three, where does, where does that figure into the count?
That's a very good question. Typically, yes. So for the most part, we do ask that the owner of the property, and let's say if it were an apartment building, we would ask the overall landlord of the property for permission first, and then based off of that. That's a very good question. We probably have to go back to the drawing board on that one.
So I'll chime in here a little bit. We are reviewing all of our parking regulations, as you are aware, and the rewrite of the entire zoning resolution. And so what we have done is copied over the current parking regulations for group homes for children in this. And then as we finalize the language for the new parking regulations, we would expect that to fit into that new analysis. And we are looking to lessen and provide more flexibility with various developments and what the parking requirements are so that we can provide for more flexibility with development, and I think that's going to help us move that direction. On this particular issue, we're just copying it over from the language that we have because we felt the necessity to address the group homes for children in the immediate because of the problems that we've been having.
Okay. Any additional questions from anyone?
I just had one, and I, and I just had one, and it, you had mentioned in your presentation I just had one, and I, and I just had one, and it, you, you had mentioned in your presentation that in two thousand and twenty-three, so last year, you, you all as staff were inundated with a lot of these requests. So my first question to you is, since you're on the front lines with this particular issue, was there any reasoning that you gleaned from that? Is it a state issue that is pushing this on the locals? Is this a market issue in Colrain? Do you have any insights of why so many more applications in two thousand and twenty-three?
We've, we've been working to find those answers to those questions. It's been difficult. We've met with representatives from the county and the state. We've, we've been barraged with these new requests. We didn't know where they were coming from and why they were targeting Colrain, just had this huge spike. And so coupled with, with that were numerous calls for service, particularly with police, problems that we were having with the addition of these new homes. And, and we had very few regulations, as you could see in seven-four thirteen. It was just three, three standards, and that was it. And so we were operating with the understanding that we had very little say in how we could regulate or what we could tell the proposed operator and what they want to do in this home. And so that's why we've come back to the drawing board and said, we need to kind of up the game on what we're doing in order to not only protect the community and the neighborhoods where they're operating, but the children that are there. And so I think it, it's just been a learning experience for us. And this is, I think, where we've come down with the reviews of opportunities that the state allows us through the Ohio Vice Code and what we could do in the zoning side and what we feel like we can do coupled with code enforcement and police and fire. I think this is where we've landed. I don't know if that answered your question?
As best you probably can.
Yeah. It, it's been a, it's been a challenging time since, since November, when all this spiked. My understanding is they've had a very difficult time finding employees to staff the larger juvenile delinquent centers. So they've gone to this new mode of putting them out into homes, and they, they have a contract with an operator, and then those operators are, they, as much as we've been able to glean from various points of information, they can make, they can get paid up to a thousand dollars per child per day. And so it's a, a highly profitable center if they can get up to that level. Depends on how much supervision, I think, that each of those children need. That's how they get paid. But it's been difficult for us, and we feel like this is going to give us a little bit more handle on the problem to have a say on whether we could revoke a zoning certificate for a violation of a variety of new rules.
Once you were able to put everything in a spreadsheet and maybe do some analysis geographically, were there a lot of violations to the existing six hundred-foot separation?
You, you did that, I guess?
Yep, so after two solid weeks of working on that, I was only able to find one in which was in violation, which is a good thing, but it had to, you know, basically go through that process first. And just for the added context, from when I got hired in June to November, I had one application. From Ju, or from November to December, in just that one month, twelve.
And do we know, is this prevalent in other communities surrounding us? Are we first to jump on the bandwagon of creating rules?
I, I think as much as Administrator Weckbach has been able to talk to his peers, we seem to have a much higher prevalence of inquiries in homes. I was thinking that there was a neighbor, neighboring township that had either one or zero. In that inquiry, I'm not sure of some others, and are they, we don't know if they're just targeting townships, if that's a more lenient rationale for, for regulation because of the Ohio Vice Code stipulating what townships can and can't do in zoning or not, whether municipalities have more, being home rule. So again, we're just working through that, those, those challenges that we've been faced with, with all these new applicants and, and compiled with the problems that we were having and the just huge spikes in calls for service and some very serious issues, and it's just a constant drain. So this is our first approach at trying to up those regs and protect them.
And I think to kind of piggyback off what Mr. Miller was saying, you would think, oh, these are Hamlin County kids who are in these group homes. That's not the case. Some of these kids are from New York, some of these kids are from Tennessee, Michigan, they're all over the place, and they're coming to, to Colrain Township, and they're, they're not necessarily local. That's part of what I think the changes are addressing here is, it helps us find out, because what do you do? If, if you're having issues with a group home, you want to contact the person who's in charge of that group home and say, hey, we're having a lot of issues here, can you help us out here? We can't do that now, we're not in the, the position to do that. These changes will help us put us in a better position. And if, if they aren't, don't comply, if, if there's issues with a group home, and if they aren't compliant, then we have the ability to, to take away that zoning certificate, which, you know, it gives us a little bit more control.
Thank you. Commissioners, any last questions?
Do.
Okay.
How many actual group homes are there in Colrain Township at the present time?
At the present time, I would say roughly around the fourteen area, probably, including the ones that are unaccounted for. I know that police has sort of a running list of them, and they're making their way in, in terms of getting them permitted. But as for the ones that I know of that are permitted, it's around ten.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, anyone like to make a motion? Okay, I will make a motion to approve zoning case, and I wrote this down real quick, so hopefully I have it right. C Z C dash two-four dash one? Okay. To apply a text amendment to Article seven point four point thirteen, group homes for children.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Hope we can have a roll call.
Mr. Bachman?
Yes.
Ms. Goggle?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. McMullin?
Yes. Thank you. All right, so that brings us to our second public hearing. The next public hearing is a discussion of a zoning text amendments to Articles one and two of the zoning resolution. And Mr. Becker, this will be a fun one. It's very long.
Say.
All right, thank you for the introduction, Ms. McMullin, starting us off, focusing on our zoning resolution rewrite with KZF. Today, we are focusing on a review of Articles one and two of the proposed update. For a little bit of brief history, KZF provided zoning resolution updates on October tenth, November seventh, and November eighteenth of last year. Most recently, we are working with two hundred and eighty-six pages of material across seven unique articles. Since the middle of November, we have been working thoroughly as a team, addressing comments, questions, and concerns regarding the material that was delivered to us. Generally, we will break up the zoning resolution update into pieces and review portions each month. And as mentioned, today, we will focus on one and two. Just very briefly, some of the highlights from Article one. Generally, the title and effective date, the authority, purpose, jurisdiction, including development aspects regulated by the Board of Trustees, handling of prior approvals, including buildings, structures, signs, lots, and uses, the handling of variances and conditional uses, the handing, handling of pending, complete or incomplete applications, the handling of private-party agreements, handling of violations, nonconformities, water supply and sewage disposal facilities, unsafe buildings, the interpretation and construction of language in itself, the handling of conflicts with and references to other laws, sever, severability and repeal processes, calculations and measurements for zoning assessments, that'd be including signs. Then transitioning over to Article two, particularly addresses the amended zones, districts, and overlays for the new zoning resolution. I have that on the next slide. The relationship among each of those zones, districts, and overlays, the official zoning map, and the interpretation of such, which has not been acquired yet. The comprehensive use permissions of each zone, the comprehensive dimensional standards for each zone, and generally applicable regulations for each zone. As for the zones that were established, we have now the rural estate residential, R E R, zone, single and two-unit residential, S T R, multi-unit residential, that is M U R, neighborhood mixed, that is N B M, light intensity industry, that is L I T, and then green space, open space, and recreational, that is G O R. Transitioning over to the districts, we now have Avenue Mixed North, Avenue Mixed Central, and Avenue Mixed South, respectively, those are A M N, A M C, and A M S. And then the sanitary landfill. And then lastly, for our overlays, we have the flood hazard overlay and the hillside development overlay.
So at this time, we do need to open our public hearing. Can we have a motion and a second, please?
So moved? I second that.
Mr. Becker?
Mr. Bachman?
Yes.
Ms. Goggle?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall? Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. McMullin?
Yes. All right, so first off, is there anyone who would like to speak during the public hearing?
That makes it easy.
What? All right, so we can have a motion to close our public hearing, please?
I'll make that motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Mr. Becker?
Mr. Bachman?
Yes.
Ms. Goggle?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
And Ms. McMullin?
Yes. Commissioners, now is your chance to shine. What kind of questions do we have for staff?
Frankly, I'm not sure what we're doing. Are those all new or are those changed? I'm a little lost.
So those are pretty much just the main talking points of Article one and two. That's why I wanted to be just a general view. So for the most part, Article one is actually just sort of a carryover of what's already existing. And really, the only change that happens in Article two is just the renaming of the zones, districts, and overlays. For the most part, in terms of the material, the conditions, the standards, a lot of it, I'd say a solid ninety-five percent is just a carryover. There's some unique things that are added that, nothing for this one that particularly popped out.
So our, we hired consultants, that being KZF and ZoneCo. So the two of them teamed up to do the rewrite, and this is one of their specialties that they are doing in a number of jurisdictions. And so they have gone through our current zoning resolution, presented this, they've consolidated a lot, gone from sixteen to seven. And so what, what we're asking in these meetings over the next few months, present you with the two, try to do two articles at a time. I think the last one will be three, which includes, you know, just general definitions, so that'd be simple. Give it a read, tell us what you think, does it make sense? Like it, don't like it? There are some things that just jump out as being, you think it's going to be problematic, you know, let us know. We're, we're going to take all that back to our consultants and, and work around the table on those things and, and take your, your thoughts and considerations to, back to them. So this is not intended to be a, a time that you're going to vote on anything. So after we have these discussions over the next few months, we'll finalize what that version two point oh, three point oh, whatever where we are. We'll have some more public meetings with general public, and then we'll bring a final version back to you for approval and then recommendation to the board, to the Board of Trustees.
So my first comment is, it felt very redundant, just because you have the districts and then like three or four pages after each district with, you know, the code. We're used to horizontal, so vertically, it felt very challenging. The districts, and I know we, we lost our screen. The districts. Again, I, I like to always ask, is that what other communities are using for their terminologies? I mean, we're so established with, you know, PDBs, PBDRs, but.
We had the same question. Lori, it, it's been a learning experience for us as well. You know, they, they, they went to work, they brought this and, and made this proposal to us, and we still are, I think, in a discussion mode of trying to determine whether we like the transition to these new zones and districts and whether they make the most sense, whether they're, you know, they make common sense. To the degree that we are the ones trying to interpret the applicants, their proposals and how it fits in here, I think, you know, and, and you and the Board of Zoning Appeals, making decisions around all of that. I think we need to understand it. They, not as much. I think we are working hard to try to start from the beginning of the application process with applicants so that we all are on the same page throughout until approval. And so all, you know, it's, it's a great comment, and, and we had the same, same question of why they felt the necessity to do this. In all candor, we, a few times, had the impression that maybe this was a boilerplate that they use in some other communities. And at the same time, I think Avenue Mixed is certainly going to be specific to Colrain and Colrain Avenue. I'm, I'm not sure that that is the best definition at this point for just Colrain and those districts, but I think, again, we're still working through that.
Right, and honestly, the Avenue Mixed, North, Central, South, there would have to be clear borders, but Colrain Avenue is Colrain Avenue, so I, I was like, why are we breaking it out? Does, does North Colrain get something different than South Colrain? It just didn't make sense to me.
Yeah.
And then the other one that didn't make sense to me, and this is just me being me, you know, gore. I don't want to be living in gore. I would call it open space, green space, and recreational, just to change the acronym from gore, you know, it's gory. So, yeah, they're just, it's one of those things, you know, you get pushed out of your comfort zone, you know, so it just seems so strange and foreign, and I know that we would all get used to it.
We, we did the same thing in two thousand and six. Made change, drastic changes into B one-two-three, R one through seven. And you get accustomed to something you think it makes sense. And then you're, have, have this proposed change foisted on us, then we think, is that really the best? You know, it's.
Right, and then my next comments go to the residential, the single, two-unit, multi-unit. They're so intermixed in Northbrook and Grozbeck, I don't know how we would break those apart or, I don't know. It just, I couldn't wrap my brain around how that would happen for residential. And it would make sense for new developments, you know? If you're building a new abbey town, that's going to be your S T R. But to apply it to what's there now, seems like it'll be difficult. And neighborhood mixed, I'm assuming that is more of the planned developments is the way that it seemed like it was reading, correct?
Correct.
Is there a map to accompany these definitions?
It's coming.
It's coming, okay.
But otherwise, that, that's my feedback, is they're strange, and I know that we would get used to them. I think there's too many, we're not keeping it simple.
I think generally, the whole idea behind the naming convention of the zones was to sort of carry over in a manner that was somewhat similar to R two through R seven, i.e. like R E R would be R two, and then multi-unit would be R seven, for example. But, yep, that would be something that we could definitely take back to the drawing board and ask questions on, particularly for the S T R and, and the M U R and the N B M examples.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. That's my five cents. What does everyone else have?
Um, I guess why I was so confused is I'm kind of looking at the, the information you sent us, a hundred and ten pages, so no wonder I was a little out of it. What would, I think, helped me, and I, and I don't know how much work it is, you said that ninety-five percent of the existing code is not changing.
Just specifically in Articles one and two.
One and two.
Yeah.
And maybe it's not a big deal for one and two, maybe we'll get in a little bit more serious modification. But what might help me is, as I'm looking through this, maybe a, for me, a sentence or a par, not even a paragraph, a sentence of this changed, here's what this change means, you know, for, for the general public especially. If this is out on our website and we're looking for public review and public comment, I don't think there's any way that anyone would know what the changes are. Just looking at this hundred and ten-page document as I'm doing, as I'm talking to you, there's, I mean, it's a total rewrite, so I get that. So it's hard to cross stuff out and. a total rewrite, so I get that. So it's hard to cross stuff out and put the new, I get that. But what might help, like I said, is maybe it's, it's in red, this is the change. For instance, the, the district naming is clearly a change that, that we need to get used to or think about. But I don't know if there's other things. I just don't know the code that well. And I don't know that anybody knows the code that well, except maybe you guys. So that would be helpful, I think, as, as we get into this process, and we try to educate all of us as citizens, that, that might be helpful.
Of course.
Yeah, I agree. A summary would have been great.
Context. But here's what the old was, here's what the new is.
Where it's significant. I, I don't, I don't envision that for every word. I don't envision that for every sentence. But I do, in, in my mind, it was, you know, there's really no change here that we should be worried about, or that's an issue. But there probably is some things that are new, and that, that we should have an understanding of the change and, and why.
Agreed. Mr. Westfall, you're quiet tonight. Do you have any comments or questions?
No, I kind of agree with it.
Mrs. Goggles?
It would help me, being newbie, just to knowing what was old and what was new. I had no clue whether it was the same or something had changed or not.
You did. A hundred and ten pages is a lot to read.
Yeah. And it, it took me a while reading through it to figure out, oh, here's where it's changing, you know, because you start seeing, say, compost bend ten times, you're like, wait, I know I already read compost bend. And you flip back, and I was like, oh, okay, we're, we're going through the specs for the, the next zone now. So yeah, it took a minute to get comfortable knowing what we were reading. So any other questions or comments for staff? And Mr. Miller, just confirming, no vote tonight, so I can
That's correct.
All right. But thank you. It is, it is good to finally get this thing updated. I think it's twenty years old, something like that?
Yeah, almost.
It's
Eighteen, yeah.
Yeah. So it's good to get it tackled. All right. So next on the agenda is informal concept review. We have none, old business none, new business none. Any administrative report or update?
Nope. We already did.
Any announcements?
Nope, just next meeting, more of you.
Okay. So our next meeting is scheduled for March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. I gotta turn my page.
Turn to adjournment, man.
Yep.
Important part.
All right. So at this time, we are adjourning. So thank you to my fellow commissioners, staff, and everyone present tonight. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.